Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, October 10th, 2006. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we're speaking, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Councilmember Fox, Councilmember Bill De La Pena, present. Councilmember Erwin.
Present.
Councilmember Glancy.
Here.
Mayor Gillette.
Here. Item four, special announcements and requests for continuance of any public hearing or agenda. We have none. Item five, special presentation. Tonight, we have one special presentation, one special presentation, which is an update for city council in our community on avian pandemic flu preparations. Dr. Barbara Spartix Wilkins from Ventura County Public Health Department is here to give us the update. Dr. Wilkins, there you are up on the, hi. Welcome. At your own pace, if you'd just like to start, and I see you've got Graham Watts there to help you with the microphones and stuff, so please, it's all yours.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here to talk about avian and pandemic influenza. First, I'll go through the nature of influenza. Humans, birds, and pigs share the virus. Contagiousness is high. As a matter of fact, it starts before any symptoms, usually one to two days before symptoms. The incubation period is short, about one to five days. Now, this is for regular seasonal influenza. Infected people can have no symptoms, mild illness, or die. The roots of transmission, and this is probably also true of avian influenza and pandemic influenza, common are large droplets, which would be sneezing, coughing, contact with saliva, hands touching doorknobs, that sort of thing, and then rare is airborne over a long distance. There isn't, there is evidence that this occurs, but it's much less common. Bird flu, it's, the bird flu that we're dealing with right now is H5N1, and it is truly an avian flu with humans as an incidental host, a potentially fatal flu infection to both birds and humans. There's bird-to-bird transmission, bird-to-human transmission. There is no currently approved vaccine and no immunity, though they are working on vaccines. It has significant potential for local and worldwide impact. When the bird flu virus, the way a bird flu virus becomes a pandemic virus is it can undergo an antigenic shift, which in general is when it mixes with a human, in a human's body or in a swine's body, with another influenza virus, and at that point, it may become a virus that is transmissible human to human. The other way it can become transmissible human to human is through antigenic drift. Now, H5N1 seems to be going under antigenic drift right now. This would be where there are small mutations, getting it closer and closer to going to human-to-human transmission. Lately, there has been a family of three in Indonesia where the first case was fatal, the second case was also fatal. The sister has survived, has been given oseltamivir for her influenza. She's critical but in stable condition, and she tested negative for H5N1, but positive for H1N1. And the reason I mention this is that in her body, the fact that she is in such critical condition may very well mean she also has H5N1. In general, H5N1 is diagnosed postmortem on autopsy, and they can't find it in tissue, especially in regular living tissue, until after, once they've been given oseltamivir. But once they're, they've passed away, they can do lung autopsy samples and get the virus out. She is a potential, a potential person that could, in fact, be that mixing body for an antigenic shift. Here we have the pandemics of the 20th century and who they affected. 1918 Spanish flu is one that's most famous. It's H1N1. Twenty million in the world were killed. The Asian and Hong Kong flus were much milder and killed very few people comparatively, and were barely a blip on the screen when it came to what you would notice public health-wise. However, the people they affected are very different. For instance, the 1918 flu, just like the H5N1 that we're dealing with right now, goes after people that are less than 65 years old. The seasonal flu, on the other hand, has a tendency to kill those over 65 or under, or very young, the infants. Let me see, have they, okay. I'd like to call your attention to the handout you were given regarding avian influenza in the various countries right now. Oh, I'm sorry. Regarding avian influenza projections. And if you look at it, you will see that I have estimated mortalities for different case fatality rates and different, a different mortality rate, and I want to explain briefly. The 2.6% mortality rate from the 1918 flu is an overall mortality rate, which means that out of 100 people you knew, two to three would die. Whereas the other two are case fatality rates, meaning that of every person sick, a certain number would die. And the reason I point this out is that people are comparing the two as if they are the same thing, and they are, in fact, not. The case fatality rate, if you multiply it out for the 1918 flu, was probably closer to 10.6%. Right now, if you look at the projections, at the lowest incidence you would expect, which is 25% of the population getting the flu, the case fatality rate at a 1918, or the number of deaths at a 1918 level for Ventura County would be 20,699 people. At, for the estimated case fatality rate of what avian flu is looking like right now, it would be 124,382. As the incidence increases, so does the fatality, the number of people impacted. And as you can see, that would be a tremendous drain on our hospitals and our resources. For instance, for Thousand Oaks, you might anticipate from 3,600 in one year to 22,083 increased number of cases over what usually happens from other disease. That would occur over two to three waves and 12 to 18 months. The situation in Southeast Asia is the most significant setup for a public health crisis that I've seen in 30 years. We're sitting on a time bomb. You should prepare for massive social and economic disruption. It's commonly thought that should this pandemic occur, there will be widespread loss of services. There will be commerce disruption, healthcare disruption, food shortages, public safety disruptions, political unrest. Long-term effects is from a demographic and psychological basis. So it's something massive that we're looking at and trying to prepare for. This indicates the bird transmission patterns or the potential for migration from wild birds, from Asia to the U.S. And as you can see, there is actually no direct flight path. It goes to South America, right now to Australia. There are confirmed cases in Southeast Asia, China, Cam, Southeast Asia, China, the Middle East, and Africa. Potential for avian flu, unprecedented sickness and death, I think I've illustrated that quite well, and you're, you should look over that handout I gave you closely. I've gone over this. There will be business shutdowns, public, safety, and health sectors would be overwhelmed. And I'm sure you've seen the picture with all the people in beds in a gymnasium. That is kind of what we're looking at for alternate care sites. These would, are the estimates for California. These are lower, and the reason I'm showing you this is these are lower than what I've estimated. I estimated off of the 1918 flu, which is what H5N1 looks like, or closer to. These are estimates from one of the more mild flus. So for California, you would look at 14,000 to 36,000 who would die of flu-related causes and 75,000 to 145,000 who would require hospitalization. I don't anticipate, actually, that if H5N1 were to become pandemic, it would go as low H5N1 is more of a killer than most avian strains, progressively more lethal and poultry, larger numbers of animal species are affected, including cats, which is unfortunate. Right now, we do not know, there has been no evidence that cats can transmit, that they are essentially what's known as a dead-end host. They become ill, they die, or they recover, but in most cases, they die, but they don't, as far as we know, pass it on to anybody else. Ducks can have no symptoms but shed the virus, so they're the reservoir, and it is an avian flu, primarily seen in waterfowl. Pigs have shown to be infected in China, and I think also in Vietnam at this point, just recently. And there are human cases concentrated in previously healthy children and young adults. As a matter of fact, about 75% of the deaths were in people under the age of 50, and they were concentrated in the age 15 to 25-year group. H5N1 symptoms are high fever, headache, extreme tiredness, dry cough, sore throat, runny nose. That, none of that sounds particularly bad. The problem is, in the case of H5N1, it tends to leave, lead to death for humans. We've had a pandemic flu plan submitted to the state, planning additional exercises to practice our pandemic flu response, including a mass vaccination clinic that we're having in November, or mass vaccination exercise that we're having in November. And that's very important to us because in the case of a pandemic, virus, vaccine would not be available for at least six months. However, when it becomes available, we'll need to distribute it as quickly and efficiently as possible. We've also gained the ability for the public health lab to diagnose H5 viruses, and we're hoping shortly, when it's released by the federal government, that we will be, in fact, be able to diagnose H5N1, the N1 portion of the virus. We do have teams of epidemiology investigators. Most of them are trained nurses who have been trained, trained in pandemic influenza and disease investigation to interview contacts of cases. We've recorded and aired bird flu PSAs. People may be told to stay home from worker school if they feel ill. In fact, the health officer does have the power and may have to indicate that people stay home, not just stay home from worker school, but that we close public activities and close schools. The importance and effectiveness of hand washing and using tissues is paramount. It's one of the most important things you can do to protect yourself. And in addition, we're recommending certain types of cough and sneeze behavior where you do not cough into your hand or sneeze into it. If there's no tissue available, you use a sleeve or some piece of cloth, because the virus will not live as long on cloth as it will on your hands, and you will not, will not then pass it to somebody else. Graham, would you like to handle this part?
Well, just to support the county's efforts, the city has itself developed a draft avian flu response plan, which deals with operations and community preparedness. We've also developed our contingency staffing and continuity government protocols. These are both draft documents that are now circulating. And we continue to support county and state strategic national stockpile planning. Also, to close, we have an extensive public outreach effort underway where information's posted on the website, on TO TV, and in the utility bill.
I'd like to point out that we have been working with all of the cities, not just Thousand Oaks, to help with their pandemic influenza planning and their surge planning. We've also worked with all the hospitals in all the cities. We're getting them together through the hospital CEOs to create surge plans that cover the entire county, so that we have what I would call a county surge ability, as opposed to just a individual hospital surge that may, in fact, overlap and be false. We've encouraged, we are encouraging organizations with contractors and vendors to require a continuation of operations plan from those vendors, because in the event of a pandemic, you will need to have, they will need to have some way to continue business, and you will need to have your supplies and all of those things that allow your businesses and your cities to run. We are emphasizing at this point, personal preparedness, even within organizations. So for instance, should the city have their own plan, we're also encouraging, say, the city to encourage personal preparedness among their people and to go to what, what things they need to keep at home for two weeks should a pandemic occur, water, food, medical supplies, so on and so forth. And we do have information on that, should it be needed. Need to, individuals also need to understand the potential impact of the avian and pandemic flu, and we are disseminating, as I said, PSAs. We also have pocket guides that are going out to the public and that will, in fact, have been passed out to the school and teachers. And we will be making another round of those available that are very simple in both English and Spanish, so that all the, everybody can understand them. They'll be at different levels. We need people to be aware of world and international events. For instance, right now, avian flu has fallen off of the news. You have to actually look for it, but people are continuing to get sick. There have been six cases minimum in the past month, so it isn't as if it's gone away. Those cases have been in Indonesia and Thailand. We need to follow the protocols as established by the World Health Organization and county public health. We are following, we are, in fact, following our, the World Health Organization protocols with their phases, one through six for influenza. We need to be prepared for all types of emergencies, and I can tell you that if you are prepared for pandemic influenza, you can pretty much handle anything, because pandemic influenza will get you a place where there is no help but what you can provide for yourself and what the county can do to support itself. Need residents to stay informed and prepared for all types of emergencies and support the city and county public health safety agencies. And here are some websites that you can use to look up things for yourself. I have additional websites available to me if anybody is interested in doing further This is how you can reach us. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wilkins. And Graham, the information, the websites that you just brought up, could you help me, is that going to, are those links going to be put on the city's website?
They're currently linked on the city website.
They are on there. Okay. Okay, that's, that's excellent. So any questions of either of the presenters? Okay, then. Dr. Wilkins, thank you so very much for taking the time to come down and talk to us this evening. Item six, public comments. Would the clerk please call, please call item six?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from strain into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, and remarks directed at a particular council member are not allowed. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda, and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Ten people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening is Patricia Jones, who is the executive director for the Alliance for the Arts, followed by Mike Estrada, Ventura County Fire Department. Good evening, Mrs. Jones.
Good evening. Honorable mayor, council members, and city staff, I'm Patricia Jones with Thousand Oaks. Just a few minutes ago, the Alliance for the Arts held a reception and distributed funds to assist 32 nonprofit performing arts groups, and I would like to thank you, Denny, for attending, as well as Andy Fox, Tom Glancy, Scott Mitnick, and Tom, Tom Mitzi. These groups vary that attended from the New West Symphony, Cabrillo Music Theater, to the children's choir. Each group is very unique, hardworking, talented, and very much a joy to watch on stage. These groups are all 501(c)(3) nonprofit arts organizations and struggling to keep their artistry on the forefront. The Alliance is blessed and proud to be able to come to the rescue, in many cases, to help these groups cover their theater rent and labor costs so they can perform here. Without our subsidy, many of these groups simply could not perform here. Today, we are happy to announce we provided $200,000 cash to assist these groups offset their costs. These funds will be deposited into the City of Thousand Oaks Theaters Enterprise Fund and be credited back to each of the 32 groups upon completion of their production. To date, the Alliance for the Arts has contributed 1.2 million to the Theaters Enterprise Fund for this purpose. These funds were raised through special events, such as the golf tournament, the Angels luncheon, the gala, and other funds we've invested. These funds, together with the annual check we provide for $250,000 for operations and maintenance, as well as the media, advertising, and other incoming support, totals approximately 1.1 million for our annual contribution to support the arts held in the Countrywide Performing Arts Center. In closing, the Alliance for the Arts just wanted to also say how much we value our partnership with the City of Thousand Oaks, and we're very much committed to continue to work closely to make this work. Thank you for listening, and we will see you in a theater to watch one of these fine performances.
Patricia, thank you very much. And also, in addition to that, the work the Alliance does, the event Saturday night was an excellent opportunity to meet, greet, and thank, and express appreciation to the members of the Alliance for the service that they provide to this community. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
And good evening.
Mike Estrada, Ventura County Fire Department. Good evening, Mike. And next will be Paul Van Zyl.
Honorable mayor, city members and city staff, Battalion Chief Michael Estrada, Ventura County Fire Department, City of Thousand Oaks, Battalion Three, and residents for the City of Thousand Oaks. As you know, honorable mayor and council members, this is the Week for Fire Prevention Week from October 10th to Saturday the 14th. It's been a tradition held strong in the fire service for approximately 85 years. This year's theme is "Watch What You Heat." A large amount of fires are caused by heating elements cooking in the home. Also, would like to special note, this Saturday, the 14th, at Fire Station 31, located at 151 Duesenberg, that's on Thousand Oaks, between Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Hillcrest, we're having an open house. There'll be all kinds of static and interactive displays there for all family members, all people within the City of Thousand Oaks. Also, at the other seven fire stations, there'll be open house, too, but I do highly recommend Fire Station 31, because that'll be a large display there with our urban search and rescue, our hazardous materials unit, also our paramedic program, we'll have a safe house, and refreshments there for the kids, and all kinds of interactive things. So, highly recommend that any of the members of the community attend, and look forward to having everybody there.
Chief Glancy, aren't you also having something Thursday at the Government Center in Ventura, dedication of the memorial to firefighters?
Yes, sir.
I want you to mention that for a minute.
Yes, that's located at the large entrance, 800 South Victoria in Ventura, and that's our second annual fallen memorial for firefighters.
And the community's invited to that at what time?
Yes, sir. And that is at 10 o'clock.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Paul Van, I think it's Zyl, I'm having a little, did I get it close? Followed by Marty de los Cobos.
Good evening. I'm Paul Van Zyl, the GIS coordinator for the city in the IT Division. I'm here with Lawrence Faulkner, who is the president of Solid Terrain Modeling, which constructed the model in front of you on the table there of the city. This company has made lots of models like this for other cities, for the National Geographic Society, and the military. And the model before you is a product of a cooperative effort of the Community Development Department, the Public Works Department, and the Finance Department. The model was generated from digital map data acquired and prepared by the IT Division, and this is some of the same data used by city staff to create maps for exhibits and analysis, and is also available on our city website. The model is constructed of solid polyurethane foam and is precisely shaped to the landforms of the city. Both the horizontal and vertical scales are one inch equals 1,000 feet, so there is no vertical exaggeration on the hills. The aerial photograph from June 2005 is carefully overprinted on the surface, and it is covered with a touch coat, which allows for gentle hand contact. In the Community Development Department, the model will serve to help identify and understand regional planning relationships, allow planners, commissioners, and citizens to see the city's development, quickly identify potential scenic vista and ridgeline impacts, demonstrate the city's preservation of open space, and evaluate development proposals with respect to slope and drainage issues. In Public Works, the model helps to identify drainages, demonstrate flood zones, and highlight natural and man-made hazards. The model will be on permanent display in the first-floor lobby outside of the Community Development and Public Works Departments. Yet, like today, it can be transported to meetings where people can benefit from this unique perspective on the city. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both very much. Lawrence, did you have any comments you'd like to make in support of this?
I just wanted to thank the mayor and the city council for the opportunity to come and address you. This is a small company that was started in Ventura County, six years old now. It's technology that my partner, Mark Fisher, and I invented in our garages and eventually launched into a growing concern. We're located in Fillmore, California. You're all welcome to come over the hill, and we promise to fix you a barbecue lunch if you do. The, the model is especially touching for me, because I was born and raised in Thousand Oaks, and I wanted to have the opportunity, because most of our work is done out of state, even out of the country, to come and say thank you and see your faces as you looked at your model for the first time. I think it's, I think you'll find it fascinating, as I do. Thank you very much. And if you have, if you can take a few minutes to look at the model at some point, I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have about how it was done and like that.
The fascinating part of that is each, when I first walked up to it, immediately you have to find your own house on there, and it's actually there.
Yeah, they're all there.
The city, they sure are. The city manager has a comment. The city manager has a comment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, while Paul Van Zyle is here and the consultants, I do want to take the opportunity to acknowledge Paul and his boss, John Augustine, and then the employees in Community Development and Public Works. It's a reflection of the can-do attitude with our staff, and since Paul's come on board two or three years ago, maybe longer, I'm not sure, five years ago, a lot of time flies, this is just an example of the tools available to the city council and staff to do its work. So, I just want to make that plug.
Mrs. Bill Delapena.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. First of all, you've done a wonderful job. It looks fantastic. My question is about maintenance, and this may be used by others, obviously, for certain emergencies or so. How will it be maintained? Is it scratch resistant, stain resistant? Is there a warranty?
I'm just over the hill in Fillmore. You can, no, the, the model can be cleaned with a soft damp cloth, not a problem. It's been coated so that it will resist stains. You do want to keep it out of the sunlight, and don't let sharp objects impact it quickly. Don't throw stuff at the thing. But you can mark on it with a grease pencil or a dry erase marker. It could then be cleaned with alcohol or something else to remove those things. So, in the event of emergency, I would encourage you to break that thing out. You can mark on it where the event is, what the emergency response might be. You can plan right on top of the piece.
Wonderful. Anything further? Okay, both of you, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Marty De Los Cobos, followed by Bruce Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette, council members and city staff. My name is Marty De Los Cobos. I'm at 4383 Via Rio, Thousand Oaks, and a proud resident. I'm here to provide you with some information about a very exciting development that will be coming to fruition if the November ballot goes in the direction that we hope that it will be. That is the Education Facilities Act of 2006. As you know, Cal State Channel Islands was opened in 2002. At that time, at the end of the year, we graduated four students. This last May, we graduated 720. This is an exciting time for the university, exciting time for the region, because of this public education facility available for students throughout the region. What this bond is going to do to the campus is going to launch it into what we hoped it will be, the university we all expected it to be. Out of the $690 million that is allocated to all the twenty-three campuses at Cal State System, 62 million, or nearly 10% of that, will be funded to Channel Islands. This is a real statement to this community. The staff, the faculty, the students have exemplified a direction and an energy that has really opened the eyes of not only the legislature, but also the chancellor's office. And they feel very confident that something like this needs to be done to really address the fast-growing nature of this campus. We've exceeded our target roles, enrollments, for the last four years, last year by 38%. Last, this last, in fact, this coming season right now, we are, we expected 2,800 students to be enrolled. We are now at 31-plus hundred students enrolled. So, we're excited about this, and we, we just want to provide this information to the community at this very important election. And I appreciate the time that you've given, open any questions, too.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Dennis.
Bruce Wagner, followed by Carl Allenes.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette, and council and staff. I'd really like to thank you for everything that you have been doing towards the Meadows Neighborhood Project that was thrust upon you guys a couple of weeks ago. We, Mayor Gillette, you've come out to my house twice, and thank you very much. You've consoled my family, and it's helped settle the situation. Right at the moment, and for the last four weeks, this picture here will represent what has been parked in front of my house daily. It's adjusted itself up and down a little bit, one or two more or less. But we need to, we need to fix this parking situation immediately. And there is another thing that we hadn't factored into this, that although there's many victims in our neighborhood who have had the honor of having to protect Mr. Leaven's trucks because they're not so safe in front of his house, we would like to remember that his family is also a victim here, and that this is an excellent opportunity for the city to reach out and rally the neighborhood behind them, and support them, and help them through this rough time that they're going to be faced as the city progresses with the action against their husband. So, we would like to get this solved, but we'd also like to have it done in a compassionate way. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Allenes, followed by Debbie Gregory.
Hi, I'm Carl Allenes, and I live in Thousand Oaks, work in Thousand Oaks, mayor, council member, staff. One of the foundations I sit on, as many, is the Thousand Oaks Police Charitable Foundation. On October 30th of this month, we're going to have our charitable golf tournament. And there are actually several board members here. Actually, right now, there's the secretary, which would be the chief of police, Bob Wilson, who sits on the board, and actually, an advisor, Scott Mitnick, sits on the advisory panel also. For people who don't know about this charitable foundation, it was created to support the VIPs and youth programs. And we have our annual golf tournament. And this year, again, it's at North Ranch Country Club. It's the thirtieth. We still have some foursomes available. It will support, again, the community, the police department, and we hope that everyone will get involved and participate. And we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Gregory, followed by Bob Wilson.
I'm Debbie Gregory. I live in Thousand Oaks. And I'm very thankful to live in a wonderful country like the United States, and a city that upholds the First Amendment. Even if I have different views from anybody on the dais, I know that no one will violate my First Amendment rights. I'd like to talk about the election, because this is certainly under the jurisdiction of the City of Thousand Oaks. I have some concerns that I want to share. My son attends Thousand Oaks High School, and in 2004, myself and other parents were very, very concerned. Bob Wilson was running for city council at that time, and he thought he was in danger, and he may very well have been, so much that the city paid for an armed guard. And where did Bob go in this danger to my son's high school, to stand in the middle of the driveway to pass out campaign literature? Not once, but twice, after being asked to leave the second day. This kind of judgment disturbs me, someone that would think they're in danger and then go by children, and someone that would violate the laws, that you're not allowed to pass campaign literature out at a school. Last year, 2005, at a public meeting, the council majority fired Phil Gatch. There were a lot of people that attended, including reporters from the Los Angeles Times, The Star, as well as The Acorn. And there were differences of opinions, and diversity, you know, in issues is healthy. Anyway, a gentleman got up and spoke, and Mr. Wilson didn't agree with him, and in front of all the reporters and all of us, used profanity, and went so far as to use negativity to characterize this man's body parts. It was horrible. This concerns me. It concerns me that for nine years, Cisco's Restaurant in Westwood, excuse me, on Westlake, the one that burned down, was out of compliance with our city codes, so much so that even during the time Mr. Wilson was in office, it wasn't a priority. Mr. Wilson got exempt from the county fires to have sprinklers. The restaurant burned down. Maybe if there were sprinklers, they would have been there. This kind of judgment concerns me. I've found numerous federal and state tax liens that Mr. Wilson has had, and as recently as August of 2005, a judgment was just lifted by South Wine and Spirits. I'm appalled that Mr. Wilson would capitalize off the name of my dead friend, Edward Masri, and consider himself to be the Masri legacy. And I'm appalled at the way he treats women that don't agree with him, but I'm not surprised, considering that he was president of the Classic Catch, one of the most notorious strip clubs in the region. I'm concerned having someone like Bob Wilson on the council, and Thousand Oaks deserves better. There's a lot of good candidates running. I wish them all well.
Bob Wilson, followed by Nick Kidway.
That's going to be a tough one to follow here. A little surprised, no, I'm not surprised at all by what was said there, and by who said it. Mayor, council, I'm running for city council, as there are six candidates and three incumbents. And tonight, I come before you to actually apologize to one of the candidates. In your ballot statements of each incumbent and each candidate, you're entitled to list your endorsements. And those endorsements are assumed to be true. Your integrity is not challenged. I made a mistake believing that Claudia Bill Delapena and Janet Wall had listed the Masri family on their endorsement sheets on the ballot itself. These cannot be taken back. The public will read these and believe that the Masri family, in fact, endorsed them. Ed Masri was one of our councilmen, is no longer here, but his son informed me that he did not, and nobody in the Masri family endorsed Claudia Bill Delapena or Janet Wall. I checked with the city, there's no letters of endorsement by the Masri family to Claudia Bill Delapena and Janet Wall. It does a disservice to the candidates who filled out their ballot statements in good faith. This is something, there may be a Masri family somewhere that's supporting them, but the conclusion is, it's the Masri family of Thousand Oaks, and this is not a fact. It makes it difficult to run your campaign when there's facts out there like that, and nobody can do anything about it. I think that this is something that we need to look into, maybe not this election, but the next election, because I think the endorsements are part of you. Who you are is what you've done in the city. I've been out here thirty-some years. I've owned a restaurant here called Cisco's Mexican Restaurant. I think you all know me. You know my family. I'm running for election. I'll stand on my voting record. But I do need to make that apology. There will be a retraction in The Acorn in regards to the Masri family. But I think that Councilwoman Delapena and Commissioner Wall have done a disservice to our city in this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nick Kidway, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
I begin in the name of God, who's the most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway. And last time I checked, Dr. Glancy is still director of Concerned Citizens in Thousand Oaks, a small group. First of all, I would like to just show the city budget a little bit on the overhead. If I, it's not working. No, it's working. One of these days, I will be able to make it work. No.
It's on this, it's.
I'm losing my time, Your Honor. Here it is.
I'll give you a couple, a little more.
Oh.
It's on the screen, but it's very hard to see.
Yeah, I know that, unfortunately. The point I'm trying to make here is that we've gone to forums for the council candidates, and there's going to be one here on Thursday, that the general fund, if you look at it, is $65 million. But there are other funds in the city, like the Enterprise Fund for Water, and that's over $10 million. Then we also have wastewater funds, which amount to $21.5 million. Also, this is from the budget summary that's on the website, this is the most current information. I've talked about the consent calendar. There's Total Childcare Community Fund, which is $649,000. But this is never discussed, I mean, it's put on the consent calendar. I mean, that's why, I mean, people should be upset, this is taxpayer funds. And then we have been told that we are a pay-as-you-go city. And if you look, the total debt service for the PFA, which nobody knows what it is, is $1,206,000. So, whatever happened to the pay-as-you-go philosophy of the city? Thank you to your review. The wrong assumption is made by candidates that we are close to build-out, and we will not get developer funds, when the real issue is the whole picture. And some people are upset at me, but the city has not been managed properly. And one classic example is, I'm glad the gentleman came about the issue of the, of the traffic, of the overnight parking in his neighborhood. The city manager said when these people came two weeks ago that the information on this would be on the website immediately. The council asked 5-0 for staff to bring a report on this, to do something immediately at this next council meeting. And while everybody appreciates the mayor going to the house twice, but nothing has been done. Claudia Bill Delapena came to my neighborhood, we have a problem of the same thing for three years, and nothing has been accomplished. I mean, it's great, she brought seven or eight people, she's a wonderful person, but this city is not well managed, and that's one of the issues that we, that the incumbents have to answer.
Suzanne Duckett, followed by our last speaker, William Vannell.
Good evening, Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. Since we're in attack mode here this evening, I'm going to follow suit. Mr. Wilson, I'm sure that after having known Joey Masri, the woman that I've always known as Joey Masri for the last ten years, I'm sure that she absolutely, positively supports Claudia Bill Delapena and Janet Wall. So, if anybody's looking for the closest person to Ed Masri to follow, it would be Joey Masri, the woman that I've always known to be Joey Masri. Now, last night at the Planning Commission, what I would like people to do out there in potato land, if you haven't made up your mind about who you're going to vote for, for city council, I would like to have you watch the repeated meetings of last night. The Planning Commission is absolutely a political appointee group of people who sit on the dais on Monday nights, and it's replayed on Wednesday and Saturday. That was nothing but a human puppet show last night. And the decision that was made regarding Mont Clef was shameful. It was nothing but a puppet show and all the strings being moved by their lawyer. The lawyer for the applicant, Chuck Cohen, he's out there pulling all the strings. These people up here appoint those people. Now, if you want people who are not credible, people who are sociopathic liars, and people who are bullies, please re-vote for the people that you see in front of you, at least two of them, Mr. Fox and Mr. Gillette. Another one to add to that is Mr. Wilson, and, and I'm afraid to say Louis Masri. I would also, so I would appreciate everybody looking at that meeting last night, and just, they could have done a lot for the people and the, and the animals here in this city, but they chose not to. The next thing I would like to have is the city manager address Mr. Wilson's illegally-placed signs all over town. If he does this openly, I can imagine what he'll do underneath the table if he gets elected. elected.
William Vannell, and we've had an additional speaker sign in, Scott, followed by Scott Silverman. Mr. Vannell.
Good evening. My name is William Vannell, longtime Thousand Oaks resident. And this is in regards to the matter of the gentleman Lehman parking his vehicles on the streets, all in our neighborhoods. We're appalled by the sight of those vehicles, and I'm not just jumping on the bandwagon. For the last year or so, I've called and tried to have something done about those vehicles. We feel that all the energy the gentleman puts into moving those vehicles up and down the streets is criminal, because we feel he's attacking us by putting those vehicles in front of our houses. I received a ticket for my vehicle when I went on vacation on 10/2. Because of the matter, the police are ticketing other vehicles. I moved my vehicle on the street, and I was gone for four days, and I received the ticket while I was gone. Now, I'm looking on the ticket, and it states, "Commercial vehicles parked in residential areas, not work-related, should be cited." Now, he's moving his vehicles, trying to stay in the 72-hour rule, but he's clearly in violation of 414. So I don't know if people were aware of that, but that's another angle. But I'm just, I feel that they really need to do something about this gentleman and his vehicles, so that's my statement. Thank you.
Mr. Vannell. And our final speaker, Scott Silverman.
Hi, good evening, councilmen, council members. First, I wanted to thank you very much for the action that you have taken. You have a lot of concerned neighbors. In one area, my name is Scott Silverman. My wife, Lisa, we've been members of the community for over fifteen years. We own our own business. And as Bill was stating, you know, we're having this challenge with storage, and we were understanding there's a huge difference between parking a vehicle and storing a vehicle. Our businesses are local, in the community, and this weekend, I just wanted to point out, it's not just in our neighborhood that this is happening. We're right off of a few of the other streets that are in the city of Thousand Oaks, you're having many cars parked where they really shouldn't be. And it's having a negative impact on the value of our properties. And I'm not sure, but I'm sure you guys would agree with me, that we work extremely hard, you know, to maintain our properties, to maintain the things around us, and if the city closes her eyes to that, our property values are gonna diminish, and it's not gonna be a pleasurable place to live. When I was, we moved to the community, we didn't have children. My kids have been born and raised in our homes, have gone to Meadows, they're transferring to Los Cerritos, or going, you know, to Westlake or to Thousand Oaks. But it's getting to a point that it's aggravating to come home. You know, when you have a, when you're working hard, putting effort into the community, putting effort into other people's lives, and then when you come home and just see a bunch of, you know, a bunch of negative stuff, you don't want to come home. But when it's parked in front of your house, and it diminishes the value, you cannot even put a for-sale sign. And if the city closes her eyes to the other streets and the other neighborhoods, it's gonna just go right over to those neighborhoods, and it's already there. So the city needs to really come up with a solution that's gonna work, and it's gonna be a win-win situation for everybody. And again, I wanted to thank you for taking the action that you had. Amy, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Silverman. That concludes the speakers we have under the public comments section. Given the number of speakers on that item, I asked the city manager if he'd like to comment. Mr. Mitney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, with respect to the Old Meadows neighborhood issue, the issue was raised by speakers at the last meeting as well. And in response to that, and staff has communicated with the city council through confidential email, or memos and whatnot, the city has dedicated a significant amount of resources, time, and staff effort, representatives from multiple departments. And there was a neighborhood meeting held on October 3rd, a week ago Tuesday, and thirty-six residents attended, at least thirty-six signed the assignment sheet. So it was very well attended, reflective of the overall neighborhood in terms of their concerns. So we did listen to all of their concerns, and a very clear plan was articulated as to what the city will do. And I can't go into all the details, but we're dealing with both the private property issues as well as public nuisance issues. And that has been communicated to the neighborhood, and the council is aware of the actions taken. It's the most innovative and creative approach that the city can do at this time, and there's also a closed session item dealing with a component of that the council will consider at the end of the meeting. So we are doing everything possible.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments section. At this time, item seven redevelopment agency, city and redevelopment agency consent calendar. I have, I have an addendum to item 7K that's in the green packet. CI 4547. The city clerk, does that satisfy the announcement?
Yes, there is an additional recommendation on page eighteen of your supplemental packet for that item.
Okay, fine. Everyone's aware of it. Anyhow, with that, with that addendum to 7K, pleasure of the council, Mrs. Bill Delapena.
Excuse me, Mayor, we do have some speakers.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I have available for questions only Mrs. Nancy Schreiner from Nordman-Cormany here in Compton on 7E. And 7E is the Affordable Housing Covenant in lieu of Affordable Housing Fee Agreement between the city's redevelopment agency and Syntex Homes. The first speaker on 7E, Mr. Gary Gurkin. Good evening, Mr. Gary. If you would please give your name and community of residence, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening. Gary Gurkin, Thousand Oaks resident since 1971. I just wanted to speak to this issue as I've been involved with this project now, and the city council property owner, and our homeowners association, of which I represent about 112 homeowners. We've been working four years on the project that's been proposed, and in realizing and looking at this issue, I just wanted to address it one last time. Thousand Oaks right now, I just read, I believe is the seventh most expensive city to live in in the United States on a recent web step. We were pretty excited as a neighborhood to see that we were able to take four single units and per the community development workup, able to take that money and put it into as many as possibly even twenty homes for the very low-income and what I call the real working families of Thousand Oaks. With the land being so scarce in this area, twenty families of very low-income levels to have a roof over their head makes certainly much more sense than possibly the privilege of four individuals getting a nice new home. We also realized that, by doing the math and as part of my business, we realized that to take the income levels that are stated at very low income and to place them into properties that are being proposed in our neighborhood would be virtually impossible based on the financing guidelines that are required by the lenders. Our concerns that the, or that the very low-income families may in fact be able to get into these properties, but may not have the resources to pay the $200 HOA fee, or maybe even landscape or maintenance fees as they come up. The average price of these homes, I believe, were approximately proposed around the $600,000 range, and no matter how you do the math, if thirty to thirty-five percent of their income is allocatable to housing, there's no possible way that four families of very low-income levels could fit in here. We were tickled to see community development come up with a plan to move virtually a million dollars into the housing fund and send that, place that money to a much better use and allow several families, of which I work with many of, to allow some sort of housing for them in a community that is very expensive to get a foothold in. Our thoughts are virtually the same as they were initially, is that the four units that were being proposed at very low-income levels, that that in lieu of fee really did go a lot further and really provide the betterment of many more families than just the four that were initially recommended, I believe by the planning commissioner. So it is the consensus of the 112 homeowners at California Oakbrook, the adjoining neighborhood, that we support the low housing, or low-income element that was suggested, the in lieu of fee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gurkin. Our next speaker on item 7A, a number of items on consent, Mr. Nick Kidway.
Mr. Kidway. Nick Igbal-Kidway, Director of Concerned Citizens in Thousand Oaks, resident of Newberry Park, Honorable Mayor, Council. I am so happy to have some company on, other people speaking on the consent calendar, which is supposed to be for routine and non-debatable items. I want to draw the council attention again to minutes. Earlier talk was about living in a democratic society and the democratic ideals, and minutes and agendas and posting requirements. I mean, these are the basic fundamentals that people in this country take for granted. And I have taken for granted that written minutes would be available for preview, and especially at times of election. I mean, this is the record. I know it's said that it's on the internet, but if you have a stack of agenda available, but you have the agenda posted outside on the wall too, so why provide the agenda? I mean, copies of it. In fact, last meeting, there was a stack this high of the goals of the council. Each stack is this big, and there were that many, and five or six were taken. So it's a matter of priorities. In fact, we have, I mean, the city is not into the attack mode, like somebody said, I mean, with the council people. And the minutes are really laughing stock. If you read it, because the minutes are just notes, unlike the real minutes that this council used to have, or which are available, and you were in the Park District. I mean, that's a perfect example. I mean, so that if you read the minutes, it's a synopsis of what actually went on in the meeting, and it's a fundamental democratic thing. So I would hope that with the election here, that at least some council member will say that we will ask ten of fifteen copies to be available immediately. Number C, I'm glad that we have the internet streaming, which is still in its infancy, but it still works fine. I listened to it last night with the Planning Commission. $45,000. Some people would think it's not the best use, and I know that we just went with wireless internet at the two libraries. I would appreciate, why not have wireless internet in this chamber and in this building? I don't know if, maybe it's already available. But since the monitors are so hard to see, I would like to use my laptop over here so that I can, I don't have to be a victim of the city, and I can see that monitor there, but that one has been, the angle is so that you cannot see it, and that's just a simple thing. Really wanted to talk about the item on the in lieu fee. I completely disagree with the minority position to not deal with it. Here's a redevelopment agency budget, $4 million. It's in the city's redevelopment budget, so the million dollar adds to it, and it's a good thing that the council majority did.
That is the last speaker. If there are any other questions, as I mentioned, I have a questions-only card from Mrs. Schreiner, attorney from Nordman-Cormany here in Compton. Okay, back to consent calendar. We have the advisory of the addendum to item 7K. Mrs. Bill Delapena.
Thank you. Now, I would like to pull item 7E.
7E. Just, that's it? All right.
And I'd be more than happy to move the remainder of the consent calendar.
All right, I have a motion to move the consent calendar with the exception of 7E. Any additional comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 7E consent calendar, Mrs. Bill Delapena.
Thank you. I initially or originally did vote against the in lieu fee of $1 million. The difference here is that actual homes would have been provided versus now a million dollars going toward rental units, and there is a very big difference. So I will, for housekeeping purposes, retain the no vote on the in lieu fee.
Okay. We love... Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, a great deal of time was spent talking about the benefits of the million-dollar in lieu fee. I don't think it's necessary to go through those arguments again. I would therefore move 7E.
I have a motion to move 7E. Comments to the motion? I think we've already got that. Nothing further, please vote.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you. Excuse me. Item 8A. This is a public hearing with the city clerk, please, with the city clerk, please open the public hearing. Thank you.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 8A. Applicant Elaine Doris Bernard Cartoon, Stephen Cameron. Zone change Z 2005-70145, from single-family R1 to residential R1 to residential plan development, located 1750 and 1752 Los Feliz Drive. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the council regarding this public hearing. All documents for council and the official city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Three people have presented cards and pursuant to council standard. Speakers will have five minutes each. The applicant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Staff report, Mr. Jeff Spector, senior planner. Mr. Spector.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As was stated, this project is a change of zone from R1, single-family residential, to RPD 15U, which stands for Residential Plan Development, 15 units per net acre. And the purpose of the application is to establish zoning to allow development of multiple-family housing, which constitutes condominiums or rental apartment housing. The properties shown here on, the two properties are shown on this aerial view. They're under separate ownership, and each of them happens to be occupied by a single-family residence. As far as 1752 Los Feliz, this is the existing house that's visible from the street. 1750, it's not very visible from the street. The house is further back on the lot, and this is a view of that house. With respect to the zoning in the area, the area to the north of this cross-hatched area, that's the project area, is zoned R1. Sort of to the southwest, we have an RPD 30 units per acre. To the south, RPD 15 units per acre. And to the east, RPD 20 units per acre. With respect to that parcel to the south, in nineteen, excuse me, in 2002, that parcel was rezoned from R1 to RPD 15U, and a couple of years later, a seven-unit townhouse project was approved for that property. This is a view of that parcel to the south. There was an application just for one of the parcels initially, 1752, and shortly thereafter, an application was filed for the adjacent 1750. And noting that the parcels were adjacent... And noting that the parcels were adjacent, staff encouraged the two applicants to work together to develop a joint project. And the applicants agreed to do so at that time. And then staff took an item before the council in September of 2005, in which the council authorized concurrent processing of the zone change with an entitlement application to develop the two parcels. These applicants, they entered into negotiations for a possible buyout, one buying out the other, or to develop a joint venture so that they can develop the properties together. However, since that time, the negotiations fell through, and they were unable to come to an agreement. The, both the landowners have since asked staff to take this item forward to address just the zone change at this time. This change of zone is consistent with the general plan designation for the property, which is high-density residential, and that allows from 15 to 30 units per acre. This zone change also is consistent with the housing element, specifically Program 19, which calls for rezoning of underutilized area, excuse me, underutilized land in this area and some of the surrounding streets. So staff, as well as the planning commission, are recommending that the council introduce an ordinance to approve the zone change and adopt the proposed negative declaration, subject to the findings that are described in the staff report. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Spector. Questions of Mr. Spector or staff? Yes, Mrs. Earl?
I did have a question. I understand that this, the general plan designation is high-density here, and I certainly, you know, to bring the zoning up to that is understandable. But my concern is that we really should take advantage of the fact that both of these parcels are going to be developed and have them developed as one parcel. So what, I guess maybe it's a question for the city attorney. Is there any way that we can require that? Because it's really inefficient, far from ideal, that they are going to be developed separately.
I understand your sentiments, but unfortunately, we cannot force these property owners to work together and develop their parcels together. They're legally separate parcels. They're owned by separate people, and we have no ability to force them, other than to continue to encourage and work with them on trying to do a joint development. But there really isn't anything legally that we can do as a city. So the, and I would urge the council to look at this legislative action separate from the issue of what's going to be developed and make the decision based on the findings that are before you. Thank you.
I just had to follow up. But the staff will continue to encourage that?
Mr. Prescott's shaking his head yes, and I believe that is the case.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional, Mrs. Bill Daleopina?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Spector. Could you please repeat the number of units that could be built if there were to be a zone change on both parcels, neighboring parcels with the RPD?
Yes. Preliminary designs that had been discussed indicate that perhaps seven units would be possible.
Per parcel?
No. If they were developed together.
If they were developed together?
Right, and you probably would get...
And if not, how many?
Probably five or six.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions of staff? Mr. Fox?
As depicted in the pictures, there's currently two units on the parcels now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if the zone change were to go through, we'd be looking at basically a net increase of three or four units, except they'd be newer units and something more aligned with what's been done in the area. Is that correct?
That's correct. It could be as much as, if it was developed together, there could be as many as five additional.
Right. The other issue is, I understand these are market rate, but these are high-density or multifamily-type units, condominiums, that type of thing?
Yes.
So they're going to be priced within the range for a condominium as opposed to a single-family? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So in a sense, it's going to provide for some level of workforce housing, so to speak. I don't know what the median cost of a condo is, or as compared to a single-family dwelling. Does staff know that?
Well, we might want to ask that question of the applicant, but, you know, there's definitely a couple hundred thousand dollars at least difference.
Okay. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Additional questions of staff? Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Spector, do you know what spurred the request for an RPD of 15U rather than a higher level, since the general plan calls for up to 30? Was there any discussion about going for another level?
Well, it's consistent with what's to the south, and there was some discussion about what would be possible. And the market is such that a condominium, townhouse-style development is desired, and you really couldn't get much more density with that, that style of housing, anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions of staff? There being none, I do have speakers now. The applicant has requested to be responsive to questions only. Elaine Doras. And I'm going to respect that. The, I'm sorry, did you wish to speak on this, sir?
Yes, I'm Elaine Doras. I own the 1750.
Fine. If you'd go to the microphone, if you'd give your name and community of residence. Now, you're, I'm sorry, Alan?
Elan.
Elan Doras.
Yes, I'm a resident of Camarillo now. I used to live in Thousand Oaks.
All right, sir. As the applicant, if I understand from the city clerk, you have 15 minutes, should you want that much time. You don't have to, but you have 15 minutes as the applicant. At the conclusion of that, you will have five minutes to rebut any testimony you hear.
Okay. Now, I can ask you some questions. See, what happened is I've been developing quite a bit of townhouses in Thousand Oaks. I've been around for a few years. I've been dealing with the city of Thousand Oaks for a long time. And when I purchased that property, I went through with Mr. Rinke, and we decided that there's a good possibility to zone change because the area is all multifamily. Unfortunately, I could not get along, I mean, we could not get to the agreement with the property next door to me, which is 1750, because I offered him either to purchase or go joint venture, but he's not realistic. Therefore, I suggested to Mr. Spector that I would like to develop it myself on my side. We, together, we could have put seven units. But with him asking outrageous amount of money, I only, we came to conclusion that the property, if it's owned for RPD 15, is qualified for five units, but with all the regulation the city has, we only can put three units, which I don't mind at all. So we've been dealing with that for about a year and a half, and we don't get anywhere with Mr. Cameron. So we decided that we go for zone change. We get our zone change, and he get his. If still he want to go ahead with us, we will do it. But if he doesn't, I just go ahead and do mine.
What, I'm sorry, what is the question, then? What?
What is what? I'm sorry?
What do you want?
Well, I would like to get approval to put three units, three units townhome.
Okay. Well, those types, those types of requests, however, between, it starts out with you dealing with the planning professionals, and I seriously doubt that there would be any kind of amendment from the council. So you're free to make whatever statement you want, and then during the council discussion portion of this, if there's a feeling by the council to refer it back for additional discussion. No? Mr. Prescott?
If I could just, maybe just interject. I think what the applicant is asking is that the council approve the zone change tonight, which would enable him to file the project that he'd like to build.
Okay. All right.
I already, I'm sorry, I already submitted a plan for developing that property to Mr. Rinke, and he pre-approved it if we go through the zone change. And all the regulation that he put on it, as I said, we come to conclusion only for three instead of five, which I don't mind. And I own it for more than a year and a half. So I think that the way that area is, and next door to us, they're going to put seven units, so I think it's pretty much consistent with the area.
Staff recommendation. So if I understand correctly, then you're in compliance with or in agreement with the staff recommendation? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, fine. Both points, one and two.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Let me just quickly, are there any questions of the applicant? Mrs. Daleopina?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Doras. I was wondering, in the initial plan perhaps, to get several units on their townhomes, and I understand townhomes are somewhat less expensive than a single-family home, instead of $670,000 at maybe $470,000. Were there any plans, did you have any vision for including, depending on how many units you will end up building, making it a little bit more affordable?
Well, putting a three unit, losing five to three, I don't think that it would be feasible for me, because I paid quite a bit for the lot. I paid $525,000 for it, and I've been having that property more than a year and a half, so I paid all kinds of costs so far. The rent that I'm getting is not even covering a half of the mortgage. Therefore, for that kind of money that I paid for the lot, I don't think it's feasible for me to put any affordable if I'm going to three. If they allow me to put four or five, then I can dedicate one toward that. But in three, I don't think paying $600,000 for lot, 200 for each lot, plus the construction cost, plus the city cost, you are going to be, my cost is going to be over 560 to 500, almost $600,000. I don't think 600 is affordable. I mean, if that's what you mean, I cannot sell one for 475, and it's costing me more than that, so...
So you're saying that the townhome itself may be about $600,000, which is almost the cost of a single-family home?
No, the townhome is almost the same cost, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Martin Cameron, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Martin Cameron, Thousand Oaks. I'm basically representing my father, who lives in Hawaii, but grew up in Thousand Oaks and owns a property there. Basically, all he wanted me to say was that, you know, of course, he would like the zone change. He's still looking for maybe an agreement or a buyout of the property. Other than that, he may build units on there himself, but he's really not sure yet.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Nick Kidway?
Nick Egbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park. First of all, Honorable Mayor, I do want to comment on this aspect of council saying that staff should get these two business people together. Many of us in the private sector, and especially immigrants, are really very concerned about the long arm of government, and the less government, especially in this land of Reagan, the better. And at the local level, the bureaucracy is so much strong here, if you compare to Texas and all that. We really do not need more interference by the government in the private affairs of these small developers. I mean, I just remember now seeing the last speaker that there was no representation by the applicant personally at the planning commission, and one planning commissioner, I think, refused to vote for the project for that reason. And a lot of these people who are trying to develop these small parcels are not these mega corporations that have staff on duty, et cetera, and they are operating on a shoestring and, or on a limited budget, certainly much more money than I do, but what the role of good government is to make it easier for these smaller people to get their job done. I do support the legislative aspect of the zone change with one big concern, and that concern should be of everyone, is that if you multiply the density times 10, times 100, times 10,000, then who actually is responsible for paying for the higher infrastructure cost? And that's one of the big issues in Southern California with the clogged freeways and with the expansion of sewage plants and all that. So what is the fair amount to exact out of a developer? And what is the right amount? That's where good minds need to look at and ponder. I am very disappointed that some people, both on the planning commission and the council, use these small developments for political gain. And as one who certainly fought for better development in the last decade, for sure, I just, I cannot see any good coming out of voting no on these things, these small projects, instead of being constructive and making suggestions and helping the process along. It is, just seems like a political move on the part of people to vote no on these projects and hurts the process. And I would implore council members to refrain from doing that. You have all the right, but it doesn't really do any good for the community, and you're sworn to do the community good. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers on this. Mr. Doras, you have an opportunity to rebut, should you so choose. Note that that was declined. There being no further speakers at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and pleasure of the council. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we have a general plan, land use element designation of high density here, which allows 15 to 30 units per acre, the zone change is requested at 15 units, so it's definitely at the low end of the general plan, which we hold so dear in our community. Looks like a max, if they were to work together, of seven units. Individually, possibly three units. I think we need it. We need the housing. I'd like to move approval of staff recommendation.
Thank you. We have a motion. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item 9A, Department reports, release of $250,000 reserve for Sycamore Canyon School. Assistant City Manager Linda Papastas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, this item is before you. As background, in May of 2004, the city council approved funds from the Chappelle MGM Ranch Development Agreement to provide a joint use grant to the Conejo Valley Unified School District, so that the approval appropriated the use of up to $1 million in funds to partially fund the construction of a gymnasium at Sycamore Canyon School, which is located in Dos Fiantos Ranch of Newberry Park. The school district participated in a matching grant program with the state, which required that 50% of the school district's portion would be funded by the local community. This commitment by non-school district partners results in a shared joint agreement, which would include use during non-school hours by the city and/or the recreation district. Originally, the bids for this project were $3 million, and when the bids came in, the lowest was 4.2. So with bid being higher, the school district, rather than reduce the size of the gym, which would therefore prolong the construction and possibly jeopardize the receipt of the state grant, decided to move forward. Originally, the council appropriated the money... Originally, the council appropriated the money, and $750,000 was made immediately available with $250,000 placed in a reserve account. The school district has now approached the city and asked, because of the higher construction costs, that this $250,000 be released and be available to them. This gymnasium is under construction and due to be completed by the middle of 2007. This evening, we also have the Assistant Superintendent Jeff Baristad with us to help answer any questions or to bring any further information to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Papastias. Any questions of staff? There being none, I have one speaker card on 9A, Mr. Bob Wilson.
Resident, City of Thousand Oaks, for some 30-plus years. I wanted to kind of give a quick, nice presentation to talk about the Sycamore Canyon School Gymnasium. One of the things that happened in our city is that, one of the good things, is that the council at that time worked in conjunction with Bob Fraz, who was Superintendent of Schools at that time, and the school board itself. And I don't know if the public really realizes what takes place when you have a council that can work with the school district. Good things happen, and this is one of the great things that happened for the area of Dos Vientos. This gymnasium is going to be, I believe, it looks like to me about three-quarters of the way finished. The main thing that I wanted to let the public know here is that this is the kind of government that you have in the City of Thousand Oaks. And I would particularly like to say good job to Councilman Andy Fox and Mayor Dennis Gillette for their work on this project, for without their negotiation and their understanding of how the money can be brought. With Bob Fraz working hard in Sacramento to get this money, the council then took the money, and what we'll have up there is probably a state-of-the-art gymnasium that will be a quality gymnasium for 50 years for that area. So I think it's a job well done. I want to congratulate the council and congratulate the school board, and I'm anxiously waiting to see the finished product. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the only speaker card I have on this item. Pleasure of the council. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was brought to the council over two years ago, and it is an example of how the city works in close partnership, in this particular case with the school district. But I also want to point out that we have a very good working relation with the park district as well. The construction of this gymnasium at Sycamore Canyon School actually places this school on par with the rest of the middle schools in the community. As folks will remember, there was a bond passed to build gymnasiums at all our middle schools that provide for not just PE activities, but, you know, assemblies and all the things that come with a school gymnasium. And so this will be the state-of-the-art facility. I want to congratulate the school district for coming through and building the project as planned. And again, just congratulate everybody that was involved with this. It's going to be a great addition for the Dos Vientos area. Those folks deserve it. They deserve the same school facilities as everybody else enjoys in the community, and would ask the council for a yes vote on this.
Thank you. We have a motion, comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 9B, notification of residents and businesses for tree trimming and tree removals due to utility conflicts. Public Works Director Mark Watkins. Mr. Watkins, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Gillette, members of the City Council. I'd also like to make sure that you know that sitting to my left is Hans Faber, our landscape maintenance supervisor, and to his left, Bob Miller, Public Works Superintendent. This is an informational item to go through how both the city and private utilities do notifications for tree trimming, both within public right-of-way and in private easements. I'm sorry, let me also note that Rudy Gonzalez from Southern California Edison Company is also here and can comment on any of Edison's specific policies. Go through kind of tree ownership and responsibility. There are a number of situations out there within both private and public properties that affect trees, both the city utilities, private utilities, both underground and overhead conflicts. And we'll go through what the city's policies are and the policies of the private utilities operating within the city. We've got throughout the city, a number of publicly-owned trees. Those are the trees that are within the city right-of-way or on city-owned parcels. Those trees are ours to maintain, and we do that on a routine basis. We maintain them both because of utility conflicts, both overhead and underground, and we also maintain them to just maintain the basic structural integrity and aesthetics of the tree, much as you're maintaining any other source of landscaping. We've also got a number, of course, of privately-owned trees, privately-owned trees both by businesses and residents, and privately-owned trees that are actually owned by the other utility companies within their personally-owned properties. And then the other situation is a number of privately-owned trees that are within utility easements. And those easements oftentimes are backyard easements. Those are typically in some of the older neighborhoods of town, where the utilities, rather prior to being undergrounded as they currently are in developments today, a lot of the overhead utilities are actually running down backyard easements. So in that case, the utilities are overhead, running down fence lines, and you've got conflicts that are created by landscaping trees that are planted within people's backyards. And we've got other utility easements that run between tracks or down side yards, and those include underground utilities, including sewer and water. So there are a lot of different situations where you have potential conflicts between landscaping trees, landscaping shrubbery, and the various utilities that are operating within those areas. Just a quick example, these are eucalyptus trees that are planted up on the Edison easement on Las Flores on 23 Freeway, kind of give an example of an inappropriately placed tree. The eucalyptus, obviously, a very tall tree that has been pretty heavily topped in this picture. Another example on Reno Road, this is within the city's public right-of-way. This is a stone pine, and again, the tree's been pretty substantially topped to accommodate overhead wires. This extreme trimming affects both the structure and the aesthetics of the tree. And when it advances to the point that the tree is really no longer structurally viable, then we look at having to remove and replace trees. And again, this is an example just of a tree. This happens to be on Thousand Oaks Boulevard down by Westlake High School. In this case, it is both topped and sheared, and sheared being our technical word for cutting the sides off the tree in addition to the top of the tree. And again, eucalyptus trees down on Flores. And again, the trees have had to been sheared on the side to prevent the conflicts with the utilities. And so just to go through again, what some of these conflicts are, the underground conflicts that we typically run into are with the hardscape, and so the tree roots will cause damage to both sidewalks, curbing gutter, and streets. We'll also have conflicts with sewer laterals and storm grain laterals. Typically, those are due to the moisture that's within both the sewer and storm grain lines drawing the roots into those areas. Depending on the extent of those conflicts, it requires root trimming, root barriers, other types of underground work. With the overhead conflicts, those are typically not our utilities, but those are the private utilities operating within the city, which would primarily be Southern California Edison. They do the majority of the line clearing, but also Verizon and Time Warner have to clear lines to protect their structures also. Clearly, it's best to deal with these types of issues during the design and planning process and make sure that the correct species is located in the proper location, or as Hans says, the right tree in the right place. A couple of examples of hardscape damages, showing the curbing gutter damage and the sidewalk damage that gets done. These not only affect the aesthetics, but of course, the drainage is affected and the pedestrians can become impacted. Again, an example of a topped eucalyptus tree, this is down on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This is a private tree within a privately maintained area, but the tree is a good example of one that's had to been trimmed so severely at this point that it's really no longer viable structurally. That tree needs to be replaced. On either side, you can see where additional trees have been planted that are growing up, and so they look like they're in kind of a phased replacement mode, which is what we do with a number of ours. The city policy for notifying both businesses and residents is that on our typical trimming, when we're going around doing all of our street trees and the routine day-to-day work, we don't do any notification. So that's our day-to-day activities. That's where we're just maintaining trees, keeping the structural shape of the tree and the aesthetics of the tree. Anytime we do any kind of significant tree trimming, if we're having to do anything beyond the normal, or if we have to do any removals, then in that case, we're notifying either the adjacent homeowner or the homeowners association, or in some cases, the property manager, depending on who's there. And then in a number of cases, we've also worked very closely with the HOAs to implement kind of phased tree replacement programs. I'll talk about those just a little bit. We did a survey of the private utility companies to determine what types of policies they're using, and they're all obligated to operate under the rules governing them, which is set down by the California Public Utilities Commission. Those are summarized in about 400 or 500 pages of General Order 90, and then specifically there are Rule 35, which gives them an idea of how far they have to be, depending on voltage, depending on the types of things they're carrying. But in general, just for distribution lines, they're looking at having at least 18 inches plus on their growing season, so when they trim them, they have to trim them down a bit. And then certainly, we're all aware of some of the issues that Edison has had with keeping service and having service outages, and so the severity of the trimming is balanced out with trying to keep service continuity. And so what Southern California Edison and the other overhead utilities are trying to do is make sure that when the wind blows and when the storms hit, they're not losing service, they're not losing lines because of their lack of maintenance. And so while at times you get complaints for the severity of the tree trimming, and the flip side of that is that you do have continuity of service during storms. The utility companies, we surveyed them for their notification policies. Their policies were similar but not the same as the city's. With Edison, they do the majority of the routine work, and theirs is similar to ours, is that they're not giving notice for routine trimming. As soon as they have to do any sort of removals or extreme trimming, especially in the backyard easements, then they provide notice to the individual homeowners. Time Warner does door hangers, and they contact the homeowners association in regard of any removals. And Verizon does the same, although they do very little trimming. And some of these companies, Verizon notably, what they'll do is put the actual homeowner on notice and require the homeowner to trim, and at that point, they feel like they've kind of given their notice. Projects where the cities work very closely with the HOAs, let's go through a couple very quickly. One of them is Westlake Hills. This is an ongoing project near Westlake Boulevard on Hillcrest Drive. In this case, we've got large stone pine trees, and these trees have very invasive roots, and so they're lifting sidewalks, damaging walls, and causing inadvertent speed humps in the street. And so in that case, we're going through about a seven-year phased replacement project where smaller trees are being put in and the larger trees being removed. A similar project on Bridgegate and Petrero, where the trees and the roots are causing the same type of damage in the street, and they lift the asphalt. In that case, the trees were really just planted too close to the street for the size of trees they are, and so they're at the end of their lifespan. And so this is an example of one of the newer trees that's placed. So we're taking some trees down, putting new ones in, and going through a phased replacement over time. And then this final one is Foxmore Straits. This is Bridgegate down, further down towards Petrero. In this case, there was a number of very large trees planted right under the lines, and you can see the severe trimming that needs to be done to maintain these trees. And in some cases, the trees are being so structurally affected that they really need to be removed. In that case, Southern California Edison was given the authority to remove the trees by the HOA. There was a notification process that was going to go on, but the work actually started before then, so the work has since been suspended. That homeowners association is trying to find a way to save the trees out there and is looking at undergrounding and some other options. They've been provided a cost underground by Southern California Edison, and they haven't really come back with an answer yet, so I'm not sure how that one's going to proceed. But there are some different options out there. The undergrounding option, of course, is not an inexpensive option. It's typically running about $20,000 to $25,000 per house. And so even financed over 20 years, that's a fairly large cost to have to absorb. And so with that, the new procedures that were recommending, and that the utility companies have indicated their willingness to comply with, was that the private utilities would be provided a list of all of the homeowners associations within the city and all those boundaries. And we've got that available, both in GIS kind of a map form, so it's easy for them to identify which HOA they're dealing with and what part of town. And then they will follow a very similar procedure to the city, which, when they're doing any major work, they would be advised to notify the homeowners association in that area before they do that major work. And then we'll have consistency then between the type of work that the city does, the notifications that we do, and the same type of notification procedures by the private utilities in town. And so with that, we're willing to ask any or answer any questions, and we've got Representative Southern California Edison to answer any questions on the policies they've got.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Any questions of Ms. Bildelopina?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Watkins. Thank you very much for this thorough presentation. You did mention a couple of HOAs which were affected by tree removal, and for one reason or another, the individual homeowners were not aware that trees across from their homes were going to be removed. Do we know where this disruption in communication happened? You say that the HOA did give its approval to remove trees along Petrero Road?
No, no, I didn't say that. No, the city gave Southern California Edison the approval to remove the trees, but the HOA was not notified. And that was the mistake in that specific instance, was the city was under the assumption that Edison was going to notify. Edison was under the assumption that the city was going to notify, and neither party did it. And so Edison had obtained the approvals that they were required to have from the city, but the HOA was not notified until the removals began.
We also had a similar situation on Avenida de las Flores, as you mentioned. Now, the fact that an HOA may be notified, does that mean that individual homeowners will actually be getting the information, homeowners will be directly or would be directly impacted by the removal of a tree?
Yeah.
We don't know that for sure, correct?
Well, you know, the situation's varying. The particular one on Petrero was a median, or a median that runs between the major roadway and a frontage road. And so in that case, there's not a directly fronting house. So normally, in those situations, if it was a median tree or a, you know, a tree within an open space type of area or something, you know, a landscaped open space, not a natural open space, then that case, the HOA would be contacted and notified. If it was a parkway tree right in front of somebody's home, then that home would be notified. And so depending on the situation is who we notify. I should also point out that all the trees we're talking about here, these are all landscape trees. These are all trees that have been planted as part of a landscape improvement project at some point in time. I'm not talking about any of the native trees in town, you know, open space trees or trees that are natural trees here. These are all, you know, part of a maintained landscaped area, just to make that distinction.
I think what would be beneficial is obviously maintaining trees, trimming trees, that is an acceptable standard because it is necessary. But when it comes to the removal of trees, and usually how the city is notified is through phone calls from very upset homeowners who say that trees are being removed. And in order to avoid that, can we expand the notification to residences that are along a median who would be directly affected? Because there was quite an outcry in one particular neighborhood about that. Because obviously, if an HOA has 300 members, not all 300 members would be affected by certain trees being removed. To notify only those residences who are or which are in the immediate vicinity of the proposed tree removals?
Yeah, we can certainly try to follow some kind of good common sense with that. It's not typical for a median to have anybody fronting it. So normally, on our taro roadways, when you've got a median or a street with a median, then you've got all the homes backing onto the street. And so we normally are dealing with a bunch of backyards when we've got a median, or we're dealing with the front yards when we've got a parkway. And so the situation you're referring to is very unique, in that you've got kind of a median with a frontage road and then houses that front out on that same area. And so in that case, we should notify those folks, and that would be a reasonable thing to do.
Thank you.
Additional questions of staff? All right, I have one speaker card. Rudy, Rudy Gonzalez from Southern California Edison. It's an opportunity, if you have anything you want to contribute to this discussion, Rudy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, states chief. Rudy Gonzalez, Region Manager for Southern California Edison, also a resident of Thousand Oaks. Now, I'll just let you know that we, Southern California Edison in the City of Thousand Oaks, have an inventory of about 13,000 trees that we have to deal with, and approximately 65% of those trees, 8,500 or so, are trimmed on an annual basis. And so many of the residents that we work with have seen us come by year after year, so they're very in tune with our routine. And I agree, for those situations where we have an abnormal amount of trimming that needs to be done, or any potential removals, we are more than happy to comply with the city's recommendation to notify the HOAs involved, so.
Okay, are there any questions, Mr. Gonzalez? Okay, Rudy. The situation that's been referenced a couple of times out on Petrero Road, I think we can all learn a lot from that.
Sure.
It was an anomalous situation, and we'll learn from it. Edison has been a great partner in working with the city as a power provider, and hopefully that's been a mutual relationship, and we want to keep it just going that way with, obviously, the primary focus towards information to our focus towards information to our residents, so.
I will also mention that, you know, as a result of the abnormal number of outages that were being experienced in the City of Thousand Oaks a couple of years ago, we did take a little more aggressive approach to the tree trimming that we have done in the community. Rather than trimming for just compliance, we're actually trimming for reliability, meaning that we're going just a little bit further with the cooperation of the homeowners who understand the need to maintain distance between the electrical lines and the trees, and we've gotten great cooperation from the residents that we've worked with, and I think the efforts have paid off, as you've seen fewer outages related to trees running into the lines.
Excellent, thank you very much. No, there being no further questions, this is a receive and file. Mrs. Beldelopina?
Thank you. I do have a question for Mr. Watkins. What do you need from council to, in order to make sure that individual affected homeowners are notified in addition to the HOA board, those who will be affected? What do you need from us?
Yeah, well, we've got, our existing city policy requires a city to do that already, and so what we've got from the private utilities is a willingness to do the same thing. And so I think we've got what we need from council at this point. The private utilities have gone along with that, and we'll try to do it, and we'll write up a new policy for ourselves, just to make sure that when we're issuing encroachment permits and utility companies are coming to us, that we're providing that HOA list and reminding them to do what they've committed to do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file. Comments to the motion, there being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item ten, redevelopment agency reports, none. Eleven, committee commission board reports, eleven A, Arts Commission appointments, Glancy and Fox. Which of you, Dr. Glancy?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We interviewed several applicants for this position, and as usual, it's very encouraging to see so many able people apply for these jobs. It's one of the things that makes Thousand Oaks special, I believe. I would recommend that the city council accept the report and confirm the appointment.
Thank you. We have a motion. Any comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item twelve A, follow-up reports to meetings and conferences. Twelve A one, National League of Cities Public Safety Crime Prevention Meeting Update, September twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. This one is mine. In your packet this evening, you have a memorandum detailing the activities of the National League of Cities Steering Committee while they were here. First of all, the compliments to the city staff, specifically, the city manager's office and Mina Leba and all of the people that work so hard to show our guests an excellent, informative time. The comments were very laudatory and numerous. I would mention, under the exhibits, and ask all of you to kind of take a look at those, because those are the exhibits of the resolutions that were discussed and acted upon while the committee was here. And I just, for informational sake, a resolution on electronic control devices, the ability of law enforcement and public safety to effectively de-escalate violence, protect citizens, and reduce injuries to criminal subjects is crucial, the overall public safety and supporters of the mission of the National League of Cities. Exhibit two, resolution encouraging cities to determine the public safety impacts resulting from transportation of high-level nuclear waste. This is an item that we brought back a couple of years ago because of the Yucca Mountain Project in Nevada, which conceivably, Yucca Mountain is going to happen, and it's important that all communities recognize that they're going to have this material traveling throughout the United States. This resolution encourages monitoring and awareness and all of the related things to ensure that we have a very informed public. A resolution in support of federal efforts to combat the global flu epidemic, discussions with the World Health Organization and the Center for Disease Control took place during this meeting. Exhibit four, we joined with a request from the city of New, the mayor of the city of New York and the mayor of the city of Boston. Since we were hosting this particular meeting, we were asked if we would join in the support of efforts to fight illegal guns, the emphasis, illegal guns. And exhibit five, urging effective emergency preparedness and response and action on related issues. So the motion is to receive and file, and I'm available to respond to any questions. Our legislative analyst, Ms. Leba, is here, if anyone has any questions for her. Okay, no comments, no questions? Do we have any? Okay, that's it, Mina, no questions? Okay. All right, the motion is to receive and file. Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item twelve B, city outreach efforts to promote federal earned income tax credit, EITC program. Ms. Beldelopina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This actually came about from my attending the League of, not the League, but the Conference of U.S. Mayors last summer, and the federal government is conducting an outreach and awareness campaign across the country in order to have families take advantage of the earned income tax credit. Believe it or not, there are more than two billion dollars that are untouched in this country. That is the earned income tax credit fund, so to speak, that is not being utilized. That is money that could be going into our local economies, that is money that could be helping families and perhaps saving that money toward buying a home. And Mina Leba, the assistant analyst, has worked a great deal on this outreach program as well, and while there are existing programs through the county and the Area Housing Authority and Volunteer Income Tax Assistant Program, for example, that are trying to bring awareness to taking advantage of the earned income tax credit program, there are many other opportunities that we do have in order to reach more families in English and Spanish. And Mina Leba, why don't you go ahead and touch upon the additional ways with which we can bring awareness to let people know that there is a lot of money that can be had?
Currently, the county has VITA centers that they create during tax season, and it's run based on volunteers. They also work with their county human services department to let eligible residents know about this service. But as far as where we stand, considering we are not a social service organization, there are ways that we can provide information and outreach to residents. Some of the ways are to post information on our city website. Another way is to put something on our broadcast scroll on TO TV, letting them know where to get the information, giving them the IRS website to EITC. In addition to that, we can provide flyers, and there are some flyers attached in your packet, both in Spanish and in English, that was provided by the IRS. We can provide that. We can find ways to put information through utility bill inserts, as well as working with groups that have direct outreach to low-income and underserved communities, such as Conejo Creek Homeowners Association, as well as Westminster Free Clinic. In fact, Westminster Free Clinic coordinates an annual visit of homes to do blood pressure checks and onsite type of medical screenings, and many of them are Spanish-speaking. Their social workers and their volunteers are Spanish-speaking, and they can deliver this information. Again, it's primarily just to get word out about the program.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leba. And again, I'd like to stress that nationwide, there are two and a half billion dollars available in the earned income tax credit that is not being touched, and it could be extremely beneficial to the local economies, and therefore, my motion would be that we support the proposed outreach efforts, as stated by Mrs. Leba, to promote this EITC.
Thank you. Are the, Ms. Beldelopina, are the issues as outlined by Ms. Leba sufficient to satisfy your concern, then this doesn't need to go to someone else to be studied, or no report back, or no additional research? This satisfies your concern? Okay. Comments? Any comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Item thirteen, city manager, Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up items, we did, our staff did provide an update on the Old Meadows neighborhood issue. There was a comment made about political signs, and staff from Public Works is doing its job to ensure that signs placed in the public right-of-way are removed. By way of upcoming events, items of interest, we did have a fire department representative who talked about the open house coming up on Saturday. Again, that's just a reminder that Saturday, October fourteenth, at the Duesenberg Station right across from the central post office. And as a reminder to council, this was an issue, I think, requested by council a while ago, so the fire department is obliging and doing this. On October twenty-third, on Monday, the planning commission will be holding a public hearing on the Oaks Mall renovation project, and that includes a Nordstrom. So it's been many years in the making, and for members of the public who are interested, you're encouraged to attend or watch. The next council meeting will be on October twenty-fourth. No public hearings, but there are three reports worth noting that will take place. Two of them deal with affordable housing as a follow-up to the city council's March twenty-eighth affordable housing workshop. There were several homework assignments, if you will, and staff is coming back. First is dealing with implementation methodology on the programs, and then the second one deals with the local preference, our local housing preference program. So we're coming back to council with that, and then the final selection and contract approval for the golf course operator. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item fourteen, we have a closed session scheduled. I'll ask the city attorney to call that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, members of the public, city council will be adjourning into closed session to have conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code, Section fifty-four, nine fifty-six point nine, subsection C, and also to meet with legal counsel concerning existing litigation, Napier versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number SC oh four six eight four eight eight, pursuant to Government Code, Section fifty-four, nine fifty-six point nine, subsection A, and there will not be any information to report out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albano. Then at this time, item fifteen, we will adjourn this meeting of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council and Redevelopment Agency to our next regular meeting at six P.M. on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth. Thank you. We're adjourned.